Thank you very much. All right, is there any changes to the agenda?
Motion has been made and seconded.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, no prepared. Tonight our public hearing is for Leona Dean, special use permit application.
All right. Before I get started, just so you know, the applicant is present in case you have questions that I can't answer.
Audio.
Leona Dean has filed an application for an S U P to operate a home occupation for a hair salon and accessory structure located at 2980 Leesville Road. The property contains 2.4 acres. It's currently zoned as agricultural. The property is in private, a single-family detached dwelling that's got numerous accessory buildings and I think an above grand pool. The S U P would allow Ms. Dean to operate a hair salon from her primary residence. The proposed business would be conducted out of an existing accessory structure. The structure itself is about a 30 by 25 roughly. However, she only plans to use a 16 by 12 area for the salon. I'll note that the building official has already went out there. They were not required to get any permits. Everything is set up and it was left to hope, so. Home occupations are permitted by right in the agricultural zoning district. However, what triggered the need for the S U P is the fact that she's doing it in a detached accessory building. Her code says that any business in an accessory building requires a special use permit. She did reach out to P.D. They did not have any objections, the health department as well, and of course, I already noted that the building department did not. A majority of property owners were notified. You'll see in your packet, I received comments back from Comer. They had no objections to the request. And then Ms. Nellie Painter called in today, or yesterday, she was concerned that she didn't mail her notice in in time. She wanted me to be sure that I want on record to say she did not object to the request. I'm not going to read the comprehensive plan. I've provided that in your memo unless you have questions. Obviously, she'll be required to get a H. County business license, which she's aware of. I have the draft conditions attached to the permit. We did not discuss these at the last meeting, so please make sure you read through them. And if you have questions, they have been provided to the applicant, and I did not receive any comments back from them. So, other than that, I don't have anything else. Obviously, I'm recommending that you consider approving this onto the board supervisors.
Very much. All right. Does anybody have time to read through Lisa's special use permit?
And there are no speakers. Don't forget to open the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I opened the public hearing, and there are no public, there are no speakers, and I now close the public hearing. Now we'll go through, and we'll have questions from the commissioners. Is there anybody here who has any questions, comments, anything that they have to say about this, any concerns? Yeah, I think it looks pretty straightforward, and they're really, this should be very quick. I've read through the special use permit. I see absolutely nothing wrong with any of this. And if there is no other comments to be made on this, would somebody please make a motion?
I'm going to accept the application.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion on this? All right, Ms. Clatterback will call, please.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Holsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Ms. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Middleton?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Burner?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Vote yes and ayes.
Thank you very much. Okay, that passes, and it will be sent up to the board supervisors. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. All right, we've got no new business, by no of. Tracy, I'm going to let you lead in with this for the unfinished business as to your discussion with the Berkeley Group, and then we'll go around and talk about this.
So, as you know, when the Berkeley group was here, she, you know, there was, she posed some questions specifically related to the acreage limit and the percent cap. And the impression that, I think you all left them, is that we weren't going to come to a consensus. You know, they're planning to come again on September the 22nd. I think it's something that you all need to discuss. And I'm not sure that having them here and discussing it was appropriate. So, you know, we touched on it at the last meeting, based on public comment. You know, from Rebecca's standpoint, Rebecca was the presenter mainly. We should hopefully be able to come to some sort of consensus. This is two major, I mean acreage and percent of acreage coverage is two pretty major points in the ordinance. And hopefully, we can maybe discuss it a little bit tonight, and maybe I'll be able to. I'm not saying that you vote on anything, but at least take something back to them to say, this is the direction. Because when she asked the question of who, I can't remember if she asked who wanted it to be more or less, nobody raised their hands, and then it kind of, it kind of got shut down. And again, in preparing the maps that they're working on, that Josh is working on, I think it's a, I think it's a pretty big point that we need to talk about before they come back here.
Okay. So, I've been thinking about this a little bit, and, you know, we've got some correspondence, some unsolicited correspondence that came back with 600. And 600 being the total, the whole percentage thing, given that the 500 didn't go so well last time, right? I mean, we're in agreement with that. It impacts, so obviously, that didn't work. And what they came up with, when they took the suggestion that, well, maybe it should be double dogwood. We went through a logical process of using some rules of dogwood, and they ended up coming up with about 100. Again, doing the same, repeating the same process and expecting a different outcome is the definition in the same instance. I'm not sure that's part of the process. So, looking for something compromised, and no dogwood worked, and that dogwood was, dogwood was 340, but had a much smaller percentage. So, looking at the two, if you averaged Cape and Dogwood in total, you end up with about 500. And then if you averaged, you use that 65 percent rule inside the fence, you'd be double two. So, to me, starting, kind of baby stepping, starting somewhere in the middle, 500, dogwood worked. Maybe taking a small step beyond dogwood or another, I think that's just, it didn't work last time.
What do you mean by it didn't work? It was, they just didn't agree on it, or there was something?
Well, it didn't pass. There was a lot of opposition. The board supervisors voted against it. So, if you're back with something suggesting you do again, I don't think it's a nice, I think starting a little bit smaller. It's, it's hard to unring a bell. So, if you do 500, and there are issues with it, you can unring a bell, but you start a bit smaller into a, and always increase it. If you go out there with a big one, and there's issues with it, that big one's always going to be there. You never, you can go smaller with future ones, but that big one will always be there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I would just clarify, I would like to clarify for members of the public or maybe the commissioners that were not on the commission, when these S U Ps were denied or approved, but at the level of the planning commission, both dogwood, which was 76 acres on 300 something acres, and Cape, that was 300 something on 559 acres, were turned down. At the level of the board of supervisors, dogwood was accepted, and Cape was turned down. That's what you're saying?
Correct.
So, you're referring to a median point between the two, based on our experience of what, what flew or what did not fly?
For what was a very long and lively process for the last go around.
Thank you.
Yeah, to start maybe somewhere between the two.
Well, when they turned that down, wasn't, weren't they turning down a lot of other things at the same time? You know, they weren't making, there wasn't any money in it, there wasn't a lot of other things involved.
Yeah, we're just talking about one aspect. So, we're just talking about one aspect.
Right, I get that.
And that was a pretty hot topic, was the overall size. So, we're, we're taking the weight of the, of the.
Mr. Chairman, maybe one more point of clarification. When the, when our commission made their vote, we did not have a choice. We, we were addressing both projects in a single vote.
That's correct.
And that, that's, that's, that's very important that everybody know that. When the board of supervisors took their vote, wisely or unwisely, they did them separately. And so, I think, you know, casting an eye back, it's just important to remember, members of this commission were all or nothing.
Well, it's a suggestion, you know, rather than start real big, you know, we've got some suggestions that could go bigger, we've got some suggestions that could go much.
Well, this was making it a maximum, so when you said later earlier that it could always, you could always go bigger.
Later on, once we have, if we ever did, if we had one or two under our belt, and we realize, hey, this is working pretty well, we can go through the process again and increase it. But if we ever, let's say, for the sake of argument, that we want a project, and we built one that is 500.
Right.
And we realize there were repercussions that we didn't anticipate, it wasn't working very well, that's a bell you can't unring.
No, I get that.
That 500 will always be there. The next one that comes along, we can always say, hey, we made a mistake, let's make it 300, let's make it 200.
Well, that's a.
But that 500 will always be there.
But that 500 is just the max. That doesn't say that everything under 500 has to be approved, but it just, again, this is why I'm against having a cap period, because, and again, dogwood is a great example of this, is you could probably triple the size of dogwood and where it is, nobody's going to see it, there's not a whole lot of impact. So, we're going to say, well, you can't do it because of acreage. And again, let's face it, right, everybody's anchoring 500 to, there is a 558 acre deal that people are looking at, and they're saying, I don't like that. But every 558 deal might not be like that. But you actually brought up an interesting point, and, so Tracy, when we're putting whatever that number is, are we referencing the total project, or are we referencing the panels or whatever? Because, I mean, as Keith just pointed out, I mean, if, let's just say we made the cap 300, then we couldn't even do dogwood, right? Because the property was 340 something acres, it just, it had a pretty low intensity. So, I guess I was under the impression that, you know, whatever that number was meant that's what the entire property was, but maybe I was mistaken, maybe that means that's the total amount of panels or something.
So, the 500 acres is the total maximum acres allowed, but the 65 percent of area coverage says that of that 500 acres, yeah, it's 300 and something, can only be panels or equipment, the rest of it would have to be buffering and landscaping and that sort of thing.
But that's what I'm saying, so the way it's written right now, if our rule said 300 in dogwood, you couldn't do it. Because the property exceeded 300, even though the percentage is probably 15 percent.
It's 340 acres.
I love this concept of acreage and percentage. If you put an acreage and percentage in, in my opinion, every application's going to say that acreage and that percentage. And if it can't, then it's not eligible. That's my thought on it. And I think it's somewhat meaningless. What we need to know is what's inside the fence? What's that acreage? One of the, there are lots of reasons to object to, in my mind, to object to 500, but right now, my main part is it seems a little meaningless. Or it will create a standard that everybody will meet, because that's what they've got to do. And, and then I echo Jonathan's concern, our one existing, you know, obviously, with that, under 500, under a 500 acre in a certain percentage, it might, it might be able to be done.
Well, you could do it a different way. You could allow dogwood by saying the maximum size of panels and equipment is 200, with a maximum ratio of that area's overall acreage, 65 percent.
That's true, but it's not what they're saying.
No, 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 we're writing the, we're writing the ordinance, so we may say whatever we want, of course, we can use.
I just want to make sure that the consultants understand our concerns. I'm not sure they did, because it keeps, it keeps coming back, and we discount that it is somewhat meaningless, and then they come back and ask the question again.
Well, and I think what they see is the total size, but if we say, hey, what we're really concerned about is the black dot and whatever associated buildings, black dot and the panels and associated buildings. And 65 percent being the upper limit of the ratio.
If they're going to stick with the percentage.
But that's how we allow.
If they're going to stick with the percentage, which doesn't seem to go away, if they're going to have the percentage, we have little choice but to raise the acreage. That's, that's just our, that's just our.
No, 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 no. We use math to our advantage here. We set, the boundary goes the other way. Go the opposite way. We disregard.
Then I support us taking a look at something different.
So, let, let me walk you through an example. So, dogwood, we would say the maximum amount of solar panels, I said 300. Forget I said 300. Now the number is 200. That's the 65 percent, if you take 65 percent of 300. Round numbers here, I'm not going to the decimal point, I'm rounding to the nearest tens. So, it's 200. So, 200 is the amount of panels associated buildings, if you do 65 percent. Well, dogwood, if you said 200 is the max, and the maximum ratio of your equipment and panel area to your total acreage of your project, site, parcel, whatever proper term we're going to choose, and we'll use the Berkeley Group's knowledge and expertise to help us with that definition, is 65 percent. Dogwood is, I mean, dogwood is allowed because they had 76 and 340, which is only 20, 0.22, 20 percent. So, they met all the criteria, and it's allowed. So, you can have big sites with a small farm on it.
So, okay, so that's on, that's on a 300 acre farm, is what you're saying?
You could have a 600 acre farm that has 50, but in theory, a 600 acre farm wouldn't be allowed, but if you do it my way, you could, if you only had 50 acres of panels.
In theory, you're, you're capping the total amount of panels, and then, in theory, there's an infinite amount of acreage. And then would that work out?
We don't care.
Why?
Because the efficiencies are always changing. It's always getting more efficient. Every 18 months, it doubles in efficiency and halves in size. We don't care what involves.
But in that case, roughly, it'd be what, 60, because dogwood was 27, so it's a triple rate. So, that would sit, um, okay, so that would be, how many? It'd be two.
If you use 200, it has to be 200.
So, you're saying the 50?
I just don't have to get my head around all the. So, if you use 200, 200 is a max, and 0.65 is a max ratio, and they can use big parcels, as long as they don't go over the 200, because that's really what we're worried about, is the 200.
So, you're talking about 200 inside the fence, to make it.
Inside the fence is the term we should use.
Maybe that would be easier for everybody.
Yeah, inside the fence.
Inside the fence, where all the panels are, where all the equipment are, where the 76 acres of dogwood panels are going to be in. It doesn't matter whether it was on a 300 something parcel, or a 600, or a 2,000. The point is a 76 acres of material.
You'd only have one specific amount you could put on, is what you're saying.
Exactly.
So, we can talk about, you can say 200 is inside the fence, or 300 times 65 percent.
We're not even saying 300, because what that implies is there's a maximum for the parcel size, which would not allow dogwood, don't, I never said 300, but waste that from your mind.
So, I'm just doing the, I'm doing the 200 divided by 65.
That's how I got to 200, in rough numbers, I'm doing a lot of rounding here, I don't need to be.
So, I'm just trying to clarify the number, understanding what you said.
200 inside the fence, and the total parcel size is irrelevant, as long as they meet 65 percent as a maximum. So, dogwood was at 22 percent, which is actually better, because it's much more green area between what's inside the fence and the rest of the parcel, assuming as it's too short for the corner that they start giving their setbacks.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I have the minutes of the meeting of the planning commission, where these projects were voted or approved, and I beg to differ with Mr. Holsinger's recollection. The two applications were treated separately and were voted all separately. I have the text right here. The application of Dogwood Solar LLC for a special use permit, Mr. Turner made a motion to recommend that the Dogwood special use permit application be denied based on the fact that the request is not substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. The motion was seconded, and it was defeated. Cape Solar was also defeated. They were both defeated separately, not in one vote.
We had to treat them legally. There were two separate applications. We had to do separate motions, or else probably that could have possibly underlined, because that's what we did back then.
I stand corrected if I, if I am being kept not correct, but I still feel that in our discussion, we were, we were, and I think the votes show, I believe that the votes will show identical voting patterns, because we were encouraged to address them together. And, and yes, I certainly stand corrected if I'm not, if I'm not correct. But I feel pretty comfortable that, no matter how that appears, the folks that cast their votes did so as the projects together.
Well, that's true, because we still have the votes.
That was a specific question that was ruled, that we, in order to be proper, so, I, I know this pretty specifically, Keith, and I think everybody will agree, had we been voting on those projects totally independently, one of those would have passed. And in this case, neither of them did. And I, I believe with all my heart that one of those would have passed, maybe without objection, or maybe with one objection. But it's either here or there. If I, if I am wrong, I stand corrected.
The only opinion I do have about it, I know we're in the process of writing the ordinance, and both Cape Solar and Dogwood are in our memory, but honestly, in my opinion, those two projects are irrelevant to the board of supervisors. I like Keith's math, and I like the reasoning and the rationale behind that. I think that works. The 200 number was where, kind of where my head was with the way you worked the map, that's kind of personally where I was. I know we keep bringing the two up, but I think when we write this ordinance, we kind of need to step back and not think about those, and move forward, you know, just as if we're right, and we're just not worried about what they've been doing. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, it's hard to do that when you have emails from attorney for Mr. Howser, who has sent us, that we received by email today, a language for a solar ordinance that seems to be tailored to reapply for Cape Solar. So, I agree with you. In abstraction, that's what we should be doing. That's not what's happening on the ground, so I think we need to be mindful that a lot of this discussion is being driven by, you know, the Cape Solar project, Urban Grid, and, you know, and those in support. So, I don't think we can, you know, deny that those things are happening. And I think Keith is right, those, we have one decision to approve dogwood, and the minutes are there, I can pull them out for you. The discussion was there. I think several of the supervisors said they were okay with one, because it was smaller, they weren't okay with the others, because it was too big. So, we kind of pretty much, the writing's on the walls, according to what you're saying. So, we have a margin of maneuver that seems to be between the two. And I support your idea, I can respond to this, Ray.
That side of the table, you're awful fine today.
I agree with what you're saying, because it limits the size, but it doesn't limit the size of the property. And like you say, you don't want to limit them to the size of the property, because it may take more property to get the right slopes than it does on some other property.
All right, well, let's just, let's just go with that premise there. Then if we went that route, then what's everybody's thought on the percentage? I mean, so, just again, to use Keith's example, would you be okay with a 200 acre, pretty much wall-to-wall, I mean, that's not feasible, but in theory, if you had a 200 acre, every single inch of it's covered in parcels, I mean, in panels, are you okay with that? Or do you still think we need some, again, we can make a max percentage?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Which is 100 percent? Well, that's what I'm saying, though, do we even need that? Or do you just say, the project can't exceed 200 acres worth of panels, and you don't even have a?
I don't think they can meet, they can't meet their setbacks in three.
Sure they can. I mean, yeah, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't be able to do it on 200 acres, maybe logistically it's 220, but that's what I'm saying. If, if what our goal is, is the number of panels, then do we even need a percentage on that side? Do we just say, look, we're, we're capping the, the project at X percent, X acres worth of panels, and then that's it?
Personally, I can't answer that, because I'm not sure exactly the origin of this 65 percent. I really don't know. I don't know if it's based on, in our topography, that's the net that you can get because of topography, I don't know if it's an industry standard. I think that's a Berkeley group question. I'll bring that, Keith.
It's not based on topography.
It's just an industry.
Chairman, it looks like it was probably based on the, the one bit of information that we had in the plan, which was, which actually then got calculated into acreage based on trans, on what could be put on a transmission line. And so, I, I think that that, the beginning of that, I think you're right, in that the, where did 65 percent come from? It came somewhat mathematically out of something that was already in our, in our plan. It's the best that I can see. We used to have this 40, 46 kilovolts was the term. And so, they, so I think they began to look at 500 acres, and, and I think it's all done with a calculation. Seems more reasonable for us to do something that is, that we know where it came from and what it means.
Yeah, I'm curious of the origin of 65 percent. I just.
I'm curious to see what's, what's feasible, economically feasible also. Well, if you have a certain size project, probably, you know, a certain, a project may have to be a certain size to be feasible. And I know that's likely to change.
Dogwood is just on 76 acres.
If constructed and built, I think we would agree with that.
Now, wouldn't the 500 acres, wouldn't that be 325, would be 65 percent?
It's 559. Cape is 559.
No, I get that, but if you had a 500 acre, and you limited to 65 percent of panels, then it would be, you'd only be using 325 acres of, for just for panels, the dot, like you were saying.
Inside the fence, yes.
Notes here from the meeting with the Berkeley group, and you've probably seen me scribbling all the time. I'm an S U S note taker, I guess I get back from college. The reason that I wrote down here on my notes for the sixty-five percent is she said, it allows more flexibility in the design. It allows for the setback from the fence because there's also code. You can't put panels right up against the fence, wildlife corridor, wetlands, it allows, yeah, you see, yes. That was the rationale. So saying sixty-five percent of one number or getting to the number directly is one in the same. It's just an easier way for us to express it.
And I also have another concern, but not all land is the same. So, you know, you had five hundred acres or two hundred acres. Some of it, a lot of it probably wouldn't be usable, especially here in the valley where there's fifteen, twenty percent rates and stuff like that, so. So.
Mr. Chairman, does anybody know what the status is on the project that's been approved? Is, are we ready to construct that project?
I've not heard anything. I'm sure they're probably, like, the permitting process would be, that would be my assumption, but I'm not sure.
I, I guess I want to, to caution people to think that just because that was approved, that it will be constructed and it will be operated. Well, I, I think we all, everyone that supports that, and I certainly do and did and will that project. I certainly hope that it will. But until it's actually at least underway, I don't think we can assume that that project was viable.
So I think Mr. Holstener is making a valid, valid point. If we don't know if the project is viable, why don't we wait and see if the project is viable? Why are we rushing into, into writing a solar ordinance? We know we're going towards a year and a half of revising our general zoning ordinances in the county. Why are we rushing the solar when?
Mr. Chairman, I have an answer to that.
I do?
We are, we are, we are, we've been, we've been given the task of completing this and the county will not accept an application until we do. And so if, if, if you're one of the many farm owners in our community who are somewhat concerned about their farm values, they would like to at least have the ordinance so that offers can be accepted. And I wouldn't call this rushing, but that's why we, that's why we will move forward. Because in, in my opinion, if we don't, our farm community will come and tell us to do it through our board supervisor.
Well, I have another issue that I want to point out, and I don't know if anybody else has seen this, if anybody else watches the trains coming in, especially coming in from Hakers Town. But I haven't seen coal come through this county. I've seen at least three train loads full of it. That's what the solar is to get rid of or to try and reduce. That's what we've got to, we've got, we're forgetting that, that. We're forgetting that because we're getting our power and it's being produced and it's being produced by, by coal and whatever, but we've got to replace it someday. And we've got to replace the, these, these power plants with something that's clean. And we've got, we can't, we can't forget that coal is still being used right now. When we're making all our high and mighty decisions here, we cannot forget that, that our future depends upon solar. You know, I get it, we've got to talk about all these other issues, but we can't forget about that either.
If you may, Mr. Chairman, in the present state of technology with, with solar, every solar plant needs a backup coal plant or gas-fired plant to operate and to be there during the hours where it's not producing enough energy to the consumers to be, you know, at night, in the evening. Solar only produces at certain time of the day. So right now, and you can read the literature, it's there very clearly, for each solar plant, you need backup coal and, and, and gas. So you're somewhat right, but somewhat wrong. So that's not going to solve the problem. And that's the, the biggest arguments of the Republicans against the liberals that are pushing, you know, for the, for the Green New Deal, saying it's not as good as it really is because you still need the coal plants. And there's evidence, and I'm happy to bring it the next meeting, I don't have it with me, but it's pretty compelling.
You do need it, but you also need progress. You know, just, you know, and, and some people be using that against, against, wow, you know, I don't want to count it. You know, I don't care. The, the, it, your, your, you know, the technology's not here yet, so we'll just keep on using it. We got to move somewhere and, and everybody's going to have to give. Just like the farmers gave on the transmission lines, gave for wider roads, gave for telecommunications easements going across. Everybody's got to give a little bit. I'm not saying, you know, we've got to lock down and give them what they want. Hell, no. But by God, we got to give a little bit to, because solar is our kids' futures. Solar, wind, and we are never going to have wind here. And if you take a look at California and the great state of Virginia, they're locking in on saying that, that, that solar power or non, what is it? Well, you're not using oil and coal by, what is it, 2050? We've got to be thinking about it now and putting stuff in place. We just, what I'm asking people is not to forget that what we're trying to replace. Because you're right, Mr. Graves said we are in one of the greatest, the prettiest counties in the world, but this is a bigger problem than all of us. And this, all that coal coming in here, it's just going someplace else. It's going to be burnt and someday we're going to see it again, we'll probably be breathing it. We've got to be thinking about that. When we, when we think about these numbers and trying to reduce the sizes of them and, and all this stuff. Or we want to go a lot too slowly. We do, we want to go methodically, but we've got to remember that we've got, we've got, the coal is a problem.
So I'd like to make a point on what you just said. It was said by a couple of our members that a lot of aspects of the solar ordinance were too abstract and not quantifiable. So what I'm hearing you say is Page County needs to do its fair share in renewable energy. Fair enough.
I'm just saying to be realistic.
So how do we calculate that fair share? And I don't know that it's a conversation that's ever been had at the county level. We're a small county, we're poor. What is our fair share of the total burden that the, the governor has mandated for the state of Virginia? Is it fair that we should be asked to do, or, or, you know, that we feel the moral obligation to do the same thing as Fairfax? Should we do more? Should we need to do less? Should it be based on our income? Should it be based on our, our available terrain that's there where we can build a solar park? Should it be based on our consumption of energy? We haven't had this conversation. What is our fair share? I agree with you. I think we should participate, we should have our fair share. I just hate to see that our share would be overly burdensome to the county because it is our duty as commissioners to look out for the county and for its citizens. So I agree, but let's have a conversation. What's our fair share?
Mr. Chairman, without, without an ordinance, it would appear that, and in the face of the present project maybe, maybe not being viable, it would appear that what we're offering is zero. And I think our share would have to be greater than zero.
How can it be zero? We already have dogwood and the proposal they keep.
If dogwood is not viable and is therefore is not put online, and we do not have an ordinance, we can't accept an application. That's zero.
Well, the one, the one modification I'm making to that statement is the only reason that we're not accepting applications is because there's a moratorium. We can look that anyhow.
As far as I know, the moratorium is still in place. And as, as it was worded, it was worded until we had an ordinance.
Well, they can rescind that. They can rescind that if they see new progress.
Well, then I guess we should send, we should vote right now to send a message to the board of supervisors to rescind it.
No, 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 that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that is one reason why we should make progress to get an ordinance because if we don't and they rescind it, then there's going to.
Mr. Weekly, do you feel that the board of supervisors will rescind that?
If they think we're not making any progress and they want a solar do, they want a solar farm and they think there's economic benefits to it, they very well do.
If you're right, if you're right.
They've asked us to come up with a solution within the ordinance, and that's what we need to do.
I, I'd say we move towards an ordinance.
And that's what we're doing.
Well, we just had a discussion tonight.
Right now, the discussion is, is we're talking about acres. That's where we first initially started. So I think let's get back to that point and let's start there and let's move forward. If we're going to get an ordinance, we got to finish, start, pick a point and move on. So right now, the topic of discussion is acres. So let's get an acres number settled, go around a room, nail that down, then we'll move to the percentage.
So is, is, you said two hundred right now, I feel like you.
Two, two hundred inside the fence.
So it'd be two hundred acres in panels and then whatever the rest of it doesn't matter.
I want to make sure I'm clear so you don't misunderstand. Inside the fence, so that could also be associated with equipment and things like that.
You're talking about inverters, the rows between the panels, whatever.
That kind of stuff, so.
Inside the fence.
Inside the fence. And we'll clarify that with the wording with the Berkeley group. I'm sure they've got a very, a very precise way of wording that ordinance. But for our topic of discussion and so.
Now, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm also trying to figure out that, you know, whatever we say here, would it be viable for anybody to come in here and do this? You know, that's, that's the big question. Because why make up an ordinance that nobody could ever use because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be economically viable?
Fair question.
So we've got, that's, that's, that's something we have to worry about. So, you know, is, because I don't know enough about solar to tell you. Now, I, I know that there's advertisements out there that people are asking for one hundred acres. But would that ever happen? I doubt it because the, I guess this connectivity issue is a lot more expensive than we think.
I go back to Dogwood and I understand what Jamie's saying, but they spend a lot of money on lawyers. They spend a lot of time pursuing an S U P for seventy-six acres.
Now, I've talked to Mr. Q on that. He was, we've talked about right here one, right after one of the meetings. And I asked him that question. I said, how the hell can you afford to do it there? But you can't do it, you can do it in such a small acreage on that. He says, because that was a dam or is a dam and the house power lines already there. All that stuff's already in place. So all they're doing is just putting panels in. Whereas my understanding is the other site, they'd have to create, they'd have to build all this extra. I was told, I, you know, you can tell me a bunch of numbers, but I was told it was nine million dollars to build a connection to wherever they had to go to get to the transmission line. Just to get, just to build the connection. So I want to look at that side of it too, so, because I, I don't want to make an ordinance that, that nobody could ever use.
So I'm having a little problem following here. When I took my planning commission as training and I looked at the, the resource guide today and everything that I've seen in, in jurisprudence about the role of the commission, we're not here to further the interests of any developer that comes to Page County. Whether it's an X-rated movie store and we've had, we have two thousand feet setbacks on that, whether it's a development for subdivision or a solar project, the viability of that project should not be our concern. Our concern is protecting the interest of the citizens of Page County and the interest of our county. So I disagree. I don't think the viability of the project is our problem. That's their problem. We tell them what, what they can do. Do we, do we consider the viability of the project when we say that, you know, you can't build anything fifty feet from a property line? No. That's the way that we set our land use because it's our county and we're trying to protect our county and our citizens. I totally disagree.
But, but you, you are one vote.
Yep.
And there are other votes here, and there've been others that have voted against you on it because that is the whole county voting. So, you know, we're all, we're all in this together, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I will agree with you that I think site selection and feasibility is determined by the company. No other business that runs, you don't work through the government to try to make your project profitability. That's up to the person running the business themselves. If there are certain sites that are not economically feasible due to the cost of the transmission line implemented there, then that property will, whether it's a hundred acres, two hundred acres, five hundred acres, it's irrelevant. I just feel like we need to set the initial criteria and let the people that are actually running the projects determine the site, you know, profitability. That, that's their decision. That's, I don't, we don't need to be in their business.
Well, well, I've seen that before in this county where they didn't want something, they didn't want, uh, things.
I, I agree, except that in five-feeding operations, all kinds of things like that, you can have ordinances which can make it impossible to, to do things. I, I think that's, I think in, in that respect, you do have to protect the, the rights of the foreign population. Our, our, the view, the view that, the view shared that we're talking about right now is owned by the people of Page County. Many of them are farmers. They, they own those, in my opinion, they own the views. That's what they own. Some of them have gone into situations in order to make, they've been kind of selling the view a little by putting in cabins and doing some things that take advantage of the agritourism business. But if we make an ordinance which makes it, that devalues their property because it makes it impossible for, for them, I, I think that that goes too far. Now, I agree, I do agree that whoever makes an application will have to determine whether it's viable or not. But we, you know, we look at a community here where my children have all left because the opportunities are not here. They are not coming back, which I made my, I made my choice. I decided to live here, to stay here. I made some sacrifices to do it. It was a thing that I wanted to do, but somewhere along the line, we have to have ordinances which allow, at least allow the value of property to be there. As opposed to an ordinance which, or, or an unreasonable demanding ordinance that makes it impossible. That, that's just my take.
Well, and I still believe that solar is, by providing clean energy, it is providing for the common good of everybody in this county. You know, there's roads that I didn't want, there's stuff I didn't want necessarily or widen, but it's for the common good. And, and so that's why if you make something like that where it's, where it's there and, and we, we deny them because they'll never be able to afford to do it because it's too small. You know, I, I'm not trying to fight for them. I'm just trying to, to, to be realistic and I would like to see us, well, I want to see where, where we can do something about that coal park. I, I, you know, we've, we've done other things in this county where we came to, what is it? The, the trailer parks and whatever. We made that so bad that, yeah, oh, it's a new trailer park, but nobody will ever come in and do any of those things. So we've talked in circles about this for about twenty-five minutes.
Can we hear from the other members?
I was just thinking that myself.
What size do you favor?
But you had your time, just a moment now. Go ahead. Start off with Keith. Yeah, done.
See, we like, we're speaking, beating farmers to death in the farmland. We want to, oh, here, they want to take the farmland, prime farmland, put solar panels on. So days come, we're not going to have no farmers here. All the farmlands will fit solar panels. And that's going to put the farmers out of business? You know, this is a small county, but it's prime farmland and prime scene. And it's a tourist community for a county. So we must want to beat the farmers to death and take their farmland and we would put them out of business. So then you look at who's lying, a farmer back there. You see all this meat coming from across the seas and, I mean, I could have had no homegrown beef and stuff like, dirt sales anymore. Because they could take all their farmland too, solar panels.
Nobody can take it.
I mean, that's what, they giving enough money that that.
That's called selling. That's not taking, it's called selling.
They're going to have to give me right.
Same thing.
So you're in favor of zero? So you're in favor of zero?
Yeah, I'm a damn near. I like the two hundred acres. I think that's a place you can start at. It may not be the best in the world, but at least it, it'll get us started and we've gotta do something. And the two hundred acres with the sixty-five percent, you know, like, like we were saying. Dogwood would, would fall into that category, so we're already one here. The other one didn't fall into it. And the last, they would put just two hundred acres of panels on. Then it would fall into it. So I'm with the two hundred acres.
Well, I thought the five hundred was right much, because I'm a farmer and I hate to see that much land to work. But like I say, we need to, we need to start somewhere.
Over two fifty. Jared?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm new down here on the planning commission and all, so, you know, a lot of the stuff y'all discussed happened before I even come down here and all. But, you know, I've, I've seen windmill farms, wind farms, I've seen solar panel farms. I mean, I've traveled all over the United States all the years, have seen this. But my concern is that, pretty much, well, concern too, but we live in a place here that for a solar company to come here and buy, they have done, projected the location before we even hear about it, to see whether it's gonna be suitable or not. I think you said Dogwood, or about the panels, about getting the solar fed to a, to a power line that's going out of the county or across the mountain, correct?
Well, we go to like the transmission.
Transmission line, right, right, transmission line. So, and, you know, it's not, we don't have a dozen transmission lines going out of this county. I can tell you right now. You can probably count them on one hand, transmission lines. But my argument is that, we say two hundred or five hundred acres or whatever, are we going, say, this total project fence, solar panels and all, is gonna be two hundred acres or two hundred and fifty acres or five hundred acres? I don't know what the, the panels itself territory is taking up, I guess what you call the dock.
Inside the fence is two hundred acres, that's what we're saying.
Yeah. Now, inside that fence, is that the setbacks also included in that?
Everything inside the fence, so any equipment, any additional.
Right, but I'm saying the setbacks that comes along with these projects, is that inside the fence?
There, there will be some setbacks between, say, a panel can be up against the fence.
Yeah, well, so what I'm saying, I mean, this is really hard to judge to allow or try to fix an acre. I mean, it's like going out here and say, "I wanna build five hundred houses somewhere up against the mountain." Well, I mean, I got all kind of stuff to go through to even, to even get the site ready. So I'm looking at that cost. But what I'm saying, I don't really, I've lived here all my life too, drive up on that drive. I mean, I see this county dump over here. I mean, I see the chicken houses and stuff. But here's the thing, what I'm after is what is best for the citizens, what is best for the income for this county. So that's, that's my thought on this. I mean, you're saying about solar power next twenty or thirty years? Well, you know, a solar farm after twenty or twenty-five years is shot. So, and I also read in Mr. Janey's letter about the Frederick project down there, they were holding fifty thousand dollar bond for cleanup, and that bond would be renewed, I think it was every two years or three years, assessing what it would take money-wise to tear this farm down. You see what I'm saying? So, it don't matter what we're ready, I mean, it matters what we decide on as far as size. But, in other words, if I say two, two hundred and fifty, then are we gonna leave it at two hundred and fifty acres? And what's the percentage? I mean, is the percentage gonna be thirty-nine for a dock?
No, two fifty is.
Two fifty is gonna be, that's all that fifty.
And that's all panel. That's all. It's inside the fence.
Oh, I see.
Let, 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 let me clarify.
Yeah, clarify that, because I don't.
For like the fifth time, inside the fence is panels, equipment, any associated equipment, any other required setbacks, because you're not gonna have a panel up against the fence.
No, no, no.
Inside the fence.
Inside the fence.
But it does not include the buffer zone, and it does not include the setbacks from the property lines or from the highways?
No, it's the fence that protects the solar farm.
So in other words, we're, we're gonna set a requirement really of how much solar panels we want in this county on a farm. That's about what it amounts to.
That's what we've been talking about for months.
Right. I, well, that's what I'm saying. I haven't been here for much, you know. I'm just trying to get this verified.
Yes. The, the size, the size has been something that has been a sticking point, literally for years. I mean, we started with the two S U Ps. And we're trying to come up with a size. And so, we knew originally five hundred for the whole parcel in nine block the first time. So, I came up with something. Whether it flies or not, who knows? But my, my thought at this point in time is, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. We're never going to come up with a perfect number. It's never gonna happen. So I came up with what I felt was a consensus type of compromise. A consensus probably isn't gonna happen either, and I don't want to stop that, but at least it's a compromise position.
Well, I'll tell you what. I'll go along with the two hundred total acres, and that'd be it.
Two hundred total, what, for the entire parcel?
For the entire project, two hundred acres.
So I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. Is that inside the fence or that's the entire property?
That's inside, that's the entire property. That's what I'm talking. That's mine.
So that means Dogwood wouldn't be allowed to be built?
Well, I mean, I don't know nothing about Dogwood. I mean, I don't know nothing about Dogwood. That's what I'm saying. This happened before I come here. But I'm here to, to understand what is out there now. The Dogwood project, what is it on hold or what, I mean?
It's in, it's in some part of the process. Tracy was gonna find out later on.
I mean.
It was approved at, as far as the county is concerned?
Well, that's why, that's why my next question was, how long do they, I mean, would they have thirty-six months to, is it a time limit on this?
It was approved at the county level. The D U Q permitting process can take up to two years, sometimes three. I know several months ago, they had one person reviewing all of the applications. I don't know if that's still the case.
Yeah. Well, I noticed the one in Frederick County, was it thirty-six month duration on that?
Yes.
Would I bring Mr. Janey's letter, correct?
That's correct, in Frederick County, yes.
Alright.
I appreciate, I appreciate your effort. It's, it is, it is.
Well, I mean, it's confusing to me, because I'm, you know, I'm behind and all with, Dogwood here, but that's, that's my thought.
You can, you can see why the, an acreage with percentages creates a difficulty. You can see why it would be better to move in a direction. I probably think within the fence should some, be somewhere between two and three hundred acres. I would probably lean more towards three hundred acres at this point. Because I'm not sure, you know, you've got lots of other things going on in this same ordinance which we have to resolve. If, if we were to simplify some of the things that are, it's, the, the current ordinance is redundant. It is so redundant, it can't be within a certain distance of a service area. It can't be within a certain distance of town. It has an awful lot of other things in there, which I would love to see going with just a blanket, a blank acreage amount, such as two to three hundred acres. And still have something that was possible, it was possible to do. You have to be within a certain, you have to be, actually, it looks like the way we're setting this up, you may have to be on one side of the road or the other, because you can't get within a certain distance of the road. So you can't go across the road to get to your power line, maybe. There, there are lots of things that we do need to talk about, and I agree, we need to move in that direction. I think that the, I think if, if this percentage and acreage continues, like it has, if it continues, we have no choice but to make this acreage larger. But if we could dispense with that, okay. That's my take.
Jeff?
I'm going to put this conversation in perspective. I was present for every single meeting of every single planning commission and board of supervisors as a, as a member of the public. Most of what I hear, I heard from the public was summarized by Lawrence Sturges at last time, what I heard Jared say in the past. I don't think we can forget that the two main economic drivers for our county are farming and tourism, in that order. We need to protect those interests. And I think the question of size is directly relevant to the view shed. The reason that Dogwood was approved and Cape's solo was rejected, and I'm referring to the minute, is that Dogwood, because of its location, was concealed from view. You couldn't see it from three forty. You had to go down, down Acres Road, and then it was really flawed. So it really didn't bother anybody. Cape Solo was very different. It was very visible. There was a lot of concern from cabin owners. Over two-thirds of the people who spoke out at both public hearings, were, at both public hearings, were against those projects. That needs to be said. And the minutes proved what I said, you can go along. And Mr. Greg has reminded us last time, you know, he, he and his brother and their company employ a lot of people in Page County. A lot of the farmers are here. So we're trying to, you, you referred to the farmers, Mr. Holsting, or said we need to protect their right to make a dime on, on solar project. But, but by the same time, you struck out the protection of prime farmland in this very ordinance. But the protection of tourism, the view sheds from the park, we have the park superintendent remind us that a lot of income was derived in adjoining counties from the park. We derive a lot of income from tourists who stay in cabins. Some people are cabin owners in this region. That's the reason that the size needs to be restricted, so they're not quite so visible. Not quite so visible from the highways, not quite so visible from the park, not quite so visible. That's exactly why the size matters. And I'm in favor of the two hundred acres inside the fence for three hundred times sixty-five percent if we wanna term it in the language that the person will present it.
I'm with the two hundred inside the fence, or the three hundred with the sixty-five percent.
I'm sorry, what was the last?
The, or the three hundred with the sixty-five percent.
Or three hundred and sixty-five percent.
Two hundred.
Alright, alright. Don?
I, I think Keith's got a great idea on sort of pivoting from the aggregate acreage to the intensity, because again, I think that's, that's where we're concerned about, and so I think we definitely ought to go under.
Keith, you got anything last night?
The only thing I'll say for clarification is, is focus on the two hundred and then a max percent. And that way, somebody can have a big parcel and a tiny solar farm, like, like with Dogwood. And that way, forget everything.
Well, actually, I kinda like three hundred. I'd like to go a little bit larger than two fifty. I've been hearing different people here saying larger.
Just a bit in perspective, three hundred is Kate. Two hundred is the compromise between the two. I'm starting somewhere in the middle, not going right back to where we were. They got denied. Two hundred was just right smack in the middle between the two. Two hundred inside the fence.
Alright, there were people that wanted two fifty. You're saying that?
I'm just saying, I don't have the right to say that. I'm just saying, this is how I got to where I am. I started.
Okay, so do we want, now I'm gonna go around a river. Do we want two hundred? Or do we want a little more? Go around, what do you think, Don? You think no?
No.
Okay. Steve?
Two hundred.
Okay.
Now.
Okay.
Are you saying a straight two hundred or sixty-five or fifty-five percent?
We're talking what is per.
Inside the fence, two hundred.
Two hundred. Inside the fence.
Yes.
Two hundred.
Okay.
How much is the majority?
Two hundred?
Two hundred.
Alright. Alright, well, we'll take that back to the Berkeley group, is, that's what we're gonna take back from.
Two hundred acres inside the fence.
Inside the fence.
Should we take a vote?
No.
This isn't a, this isn't.
Just to clarify.
Because it's, they're, they're gonna present this, and then we'll vote on it, please.
Can I clarify?
Yeah, please.
With a max percentage of sixty-five. So that would allow for a big parcel with small amounts of solar panels.
So two hundred acres inside the fence and a max percentage of sixty-five percent.
We made the bottom count. Alright.
I guess I just wanna make sure I understand you're adding the max percentage.
So let me give you an example. Just for an example, this is our real parcels, or you could have a thousand acres and only twenty acres of solar panels. If you do two hundred acres and three hundred, you could never have that. But a thousand acres of the twenty acre solar farm would be fine. We'd have no issue with that.
Yeah, and I agree, if that's, if that's what it means.
That's exactly what it is.
We'll have to be careful, because I thought of too many to, to front max percentage. I could see them working backwards now and coming up with a maximum inside the acres. You just wanna make sure.
No, no, no. We, we, they, they will understand, and we will work closely with them to make sure that they craft language that is airtight, that they're, and that's what their consultants at the county specifically do.
Six hundred and fifty acres on, of, of land along the transmission line would qualify for two hundred acres inside the fence.
They could never have more than two hundred acre inside the fence, but their parcel can be bigger, so it would be more area.
I don't want the consultants going back and figuring the size of the lot based on sixty-five, which, which I would be afraid that they will now do, because they seem so compelled to keep an acreage in percentage.
And they will be here in September, and we will have the opportunity to make that crystal clear to them.
Just to follow my, but if the parcel size, say, is two hundred acres, if the parcel size, then the max amount inside the fence would only be a hundred and thirty acres, correct? We're gonna maintain the sixty-five.
Bingo, yes, bingo.
It works both ways.
It works both ways. He's right. You still have to hit that sixty-five percent.
I, I don't fear either of those two. I fear the, the consultants sending back to us, as they have twice, a calculated percentage.
Do we need to have a definition written up as to what you just, and then?
I'm just gonna ask, would you, are we gonna put that in email form, so I can send it to you, not to unexplain when that acreage on the campus?
Anything else on this topic? My chairman's report was that I did see all that poll come in the county, and I still think we're gonna see it later. With that, Tracy, do you have anything?
Just a couple of things. The September twenty-second meeting, again, Berkeley group's gonna be here. They're working on getting some maps together with Josh. So I'll have that material for you hopefully soon to review. We'll take this back to them. I passed out a flyer. This is the kickoff public meeting for the zoning subdivision of land ordinance overhaul. Of course, I'd love for you all to attend and tell your neighbors and business owners that you know, and anyone that you think will be willing to participate, please put it out there. And it's at the Stanley Fire Hall, six o'clock. We did put ads in the paper, and just for the record, again, this meeting on the second will not include solar discussion. I specifically put that in the ad. It's everything else. So if you get asked that question, just make sure. And of course, you're welcome. If we're getting ready to launch our website, it's gonna have a lot of our handout, Berkeley group's handouts from the process and stuff. Once I get, once we get that up and running. Once I get, once we get that up and running, it should be in the next day or so. I'll forward it to you all so you can take a look at it and stuff. But if you can, try to come.
Yeah.
Either I recommend that to... Is it like 1:00 that day?
Yes, yes, we have...
Make sure it's not something that's...
Yeah, yeah. During the day, we're having a stakeholder meeting. So what we did is we invited certain groups. So for example, John, the banker, Jared, the farmer. You know, I'm bringing in engineers, surveyors, contractors, residential and commercial tourism.
And that's specific to zoning?
And that is specific to zoning and subdivision of land. Again, not, not, nothing to do with solar. They're treated as two separate matters, two separate contracts with the Berkeley group, so.
Jeff, you got a question?
Yes, is there some kind of agenda or is it going to be like a pre-roll?
It is, it's going to be posted. It's already done and it'll be posted.
So there's going to be certain topics that's going to be managed, yes?
Yes, yes. That's all I have. The resenting request for the not still is approved by the board supervisor. So thank you all. Happy to get that all approved.
All right. Unless there's, anybody that has any other comments to be made? I joined in. We're going to start somewhere.
I sleep, that's one of the funny things I've heard in Tegu.
Good job. See, Jared, you see anything? He just said that I was rude to you.
Everybody likes you.
You think I'm rude to you?
Well, let's just say it's funny.
Well, I'm here.